Are we ready?
We're ready.
Thanks, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to a special joint workshop, Highland Village City Council and Planning and Zoning. This meeting is called to order at 5:31 for council.
Planning and zoning meeting is called to order at 5:31.
Wow, we're good.
Yeah.
We make that happen. All right. So tonight, we are going to receive a presentation and discuss proposed Wing Drone Delivery Service at Walmart located at 36 Justin Road in Highland Village. This is the presentation and who's?
Mayor, I'll start it.
Perfect.
I want to make sure because I don't see the normal light on the microphone, so I don't know if my microphone's working. Is my microphone working?
Paul's microphone on. Can you hear Paul?
Is he here on Charlotte?
Yeah.
He's coming.
It's showing low battery.
We just don't have the speakers up very loud in here because of feedback.
Feedback. Okay. It's showing low battery, so I didn't know it was picking up at all.
Okay, we'll get some.
Okay. That's your way.
Nah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Batteries delivered.
Here, come get mine. Yeah, there you go.
Well, Mayor, Council and Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you all for being here tonight. And to the new P&amp;Z members, welcome. We're glad to have you all being a part of this. And I think this is a great, great way for you all to have your first meeting. So, we do occasionally have joint meetings between the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission if it's a unique or interesting item, and this is one of those. We currently do not have anything in our ordinance that really speaks to drone delivery. And so if we were to do that, we would need to make some changes to our ordinance, which of course we can do and many cities have done it. And I know that the team here from Wing will talk about that. The closest one to us is in Lewisville at the Walmart. And I believe many of you took a tour of that and saw the drone delivery there. That Walmart location actually does reach into Highland Village a little bit. In fact, Mayor, I think you can get deliveries at your house.
Yes.
But it doesn't quite cover the whole area. So the Highland Village Walmart would like to do that as well. So with that, Mark, I believe you're going to go first, so I'll turn it over to you.
Does this microphone here sound good? Yes.
I think so.
Okay, perfect. All right, awesome. And I've got a clicker. So, sounds great. So first and foremost, I wanted to tell you guys thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And for the most part, I also see some familiar places from the Lewisville trip as well. So Mark Bergman, I am from 702 Southwest 8th Street, Rettinville, Arkansas, zip code 72719. And I'm also joined here by a few other members from the program itself. I've got Bernice from Kimberly Horn, who's going to be able to kind of speak on our Civil as far as the site setup, as well as Catherine, who's going to be able to kind of speak on the technology. And then myself, I'm going to speak on behalf of Walmart. And that sounds very, very big, but I'm going to just kind of talk a little bit about why we are saying drone delivery and why we would like to provide that opportunity to Highland Village. So let me go ahead and get started here. And I was going to say, as far as why drone delivery? And before I jump into the slides, I just want to talk real quick about customers because Walmart's all about its customers and understanding our customers and meeting the customer needs. Ever since Walmart first founded, they kind of went out to the rural areas and looked at the needs of those customers and getting started there first and foremost. And you can think back to how times have changed and customers' behaviors are changing. I mean, I can think back to when I was a teenager and I ordered a tape deck through Crutchfield Catalog and it took me about four to six weeks to get that item. Today, I've got my daughters that are over at Texas Tech and they have no problem calling me up late at night and then saying, Dad, it's going to be a late night. Can you get me some food? And me thinking I'm a great dad, I'll put that order in and I'll get them some food delivered. I typically wouldn't do it myself, but because I'm away and it's a distance and it's very convenient, I do. And then my wife, you know, my wife, she likes to order tons. We've got packages arriving at our front doorstep all the time. It feels like it's Christmas year round. So what we've seen with online ordering is demand has been growing. Customers love it. And when we had the pandemic, that was gasoline, throwing gasoline on the fire. And basically, not only did customers like it, it's stuck around and it's continued to grow. And so, I mean, you'd be hard pressed to find a Walmart with less than 20 pickup and delivery parking spaces. So what we're seeing is growth in online ordering. We're seeing customers liking the convenience. We're seeing customers actually wanting to see the service being delivered to them on their schedule to meet their needs. And that's something that drone delivery does for them, being able to provide that delivery in less than 30 minutes. So we look at the program as a whole and we take a look at the Dallas market. Dallas market is very, very, very much a prime target for us when it comes to innovation. I think Texas as a whole, being a Texas native, I tell you, Texas is very business friendly and also very open to innovation, which is why Walmart's got its innovation hub here in Dallas. So a lot of the newer programs that we have for Walmart, we typically come to Dallas and we like to test and also to see if this is something that we could potentially roll out nationwide. So with that innovation hub here, what we want to do is be able to bring that drone delivery program, bring exactly what we've seen over in Lewisville over to Highland Village. And so when it looks, when we're looking at Dallas, so far to date, we have a total of 12 sites that are set up that are actively running with our Wing Drone Delivery. Basically, they're out over Arlington, Cedar Hill, Fort Worth, Frisco, Garland and North Richland Hills. And so just looking at the drone delivery itself, I mentioned less than 30 minutes. That's a big one there. But also, there's several other factors when it comes to drone delivery and why it makes so much sense, not just for Highland Village, but for our customers here. Number one, it's definitely safe. It's a much more safer alternative. It's almost the safest way to actually transport goods and services. I would tell you Wing, an outstanding partner, has got an excellent, outstanding safety record. And it's not just Wing's doing a great job on their own. FAA's out there making sure that we are hitting all the requirements and some plus. As far as the drones themselves, they're very extremely clean and efficient. When you think about delivering goods in small orders, it's much more efficient than driving a vehicle on the road to make that small delivery. Much more faster, like I said, less than 30 minutes. These drones, when they're flying, they don't necessarily have a stop sign. They don't add to roadway congestion. It's not another driver vehicle on the roadway. So very efficient and very fast. And as far as cheaper, they are a cheaper alternative than an automobile. And so there is quite a bit of cost efficiency that's kind of built into that. As far as the jobs, looking at what Wing brings to the table, Wing is new. It's cutting edge. And almost anybody I talk to always wants to talk more about drone delivery and how they get into this space in the industry. And I can tell you, Catherine can tell you about the many experiences with the local community and how thrilled and excited our kids to learn more and to think that this is the way the world is going. So greater access, maintain tech, and I'm just going to say that's just about it. Other than that, I want to go and show you guys a quick video just so that we know what we're talking about here for those of you that weren't able to make it out to Lewisville. Just wanted to show a quick video of drone delivery. And on this here, so this is the daily operation, they're getting set up. And what you're seeing here is the fit bit for the drones. They're just basically going through and they're checking out their system. And then you've got a crew member that's coming over and is going to basically take that lanyard there, the pill, and load the package. And I've got a package right up here as well, so we can all see that. And they're able to take that into the drone itself and then it will fly to the customer fairly quickly. And I don't want to get too far into the tech. Catherine, you can speak about how fast that goes, but it's fairly quick and it's fairly easy. In fact, Catherine, you know, I feel like we're getting right into the tech anyway, so perfect time to hand off.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Catherine Levin. I'm the Local Policy and Community Affairs Manager for Wing. I'm based in downtown Dallas, Texas. In the video that you just saw behind me, that just shows you the end-to-end process of what it looks like for customers when they're getting packages delivered. This is actually a live video in live order, real order that went out from our Frisco Walmart. The Nest setup that you see here, that's what it would look like at the Highland Village store for our process. Now, from the customer end, for your residents in Highland Village, when they're thinking about drone delivery, there is an app that's available, so making it very convenient. For the Wing process, we have an app that we use when we launch service with Walmart. At some point, service will move over to the Walmart Plus app. But for the initial launch, we do have a Wing app that you can find in the Google Play or Apple Store. For the app process, whether it's with Walmart Plus or with our app, the customer experience is very similar. So you're able to put in your address to determine your location that's eligible for drone delivery. So let's say if I was to put in an address in Frisco, I was just working at our office in Frisco today, I could put in that address and it would bring up the Preston Road Walmart. So for Highland Village, your residents would be able to put in their address depending on like Mayor Wilcox. If you're closer to the Lewisville store, you might be able to order items from there. Or if you're on the further side of Highland Village, you might be able to order directly from your Walmart. Based on that, it's able to determine eligibility. Now, there are some things that we do on the front end before launching the service. We have a geo team at Wing that goes into each municipality and they're going to look within a six-mile radius from that store to determine eligible homes and properties for delivery. Now, there are a number of factors that come into play that can, may or may not make you eligible for delivery. For example, if you have power lines, heavy trees covering your property, that would prevent the drone from being able to deliver the package in safely. Those things are taken into consideration and so you may get a notice saying that you're not eligible for delivery at this time. But for most customers, they are eligible for delivery. From there, you're able to peruse the catalog of items and then you're able to check out just like you would in any other app. So if you've ever done Uber Eats or DoorDash or Amazon, very similar experience. The catalog is pre-selected in advance with our partners at the Walmart store to make sure that all items fit our weight restrictions for the drone. So there's nothing in the catalog that you would be able to order. I was just with some students earlier today and I have students ask me all the time, well, can I get a TV? Or, you know, I want to get like the Nerf gun or those type of things. Unfortunately, if it doesn't fit into the package or it's over the weight limit, it wouldn't be available in catalog. From there, you're also able to select your delivery spot at your home. So let's say you would prefer to have items delivered to your backyard versus at your front yard. You're able to select that through the app process and you confirm that. Also, when you're confirming that delivery spot, you're going to have to check like two checkboxes. It's going to ask you multiple times, is your delivery spot clear? So there's not a car or a trampoline, a child, a pet, or anything that is in your delivery spot that would obstruct that delivery process. Then from there, you're able to track your order to, from the store to your home. You'll see a little drone that leaves from the Walmart and flies to your house. And you also get a countdown clock, as you see in that step, that lets you know the exact timing of when your order is arriving at your home. Ideally, customers are going to be at home or someone is present to receive the package and we have that countdown clock and the visual tracker to make sure that the process is very seamless. So again, I'm sure everyone has done Uber Eats one or two times. Same as like me watching tacos head to my house on a Friday night. You can do the same thing with your packages for drone delivery. From there, you get a confirmation that lets you know your package has been delivered to your delivery zone. Please come outside to enjoy your order. So from there, I'm going to turn it over to Bernice and we'll look at the site setup for what we're proposing at the Walmart store. And then I'll come back up and dive into some more specifics about the drone technology.
Yeah, so my name's Bernice Espinoza and I'm out of San Antonio, Texas. And this is a site, you know, this is the actual Highland Village Walmart that's going on right now. This is the location we're proposing, but we've actually updated it. So it's actually on the, if I'm looking at it right, so my right-hand side at the bottom. And like you can tell, we're taking up some parking spaces, so we'll have to work through that because we are going to be underparked for city requirements. And we can work through that as we're going through the process of what that looks like. As you can tell, it's going to, let me see if I can go to the next one. So like Catherine was showing earlier, it's a Nest setup, which is the chargers on the floor. I'll let Catherine speak to those, but you'll have a fence around it and we will take up, I think it's about 28 parking spaces. We can work through that because like I said, we are underparked, but we can look at maybe adding some more or changing some of the current spaces. But that is our site setup for now. One thing we did take into consideration on where we place these Nest setups, because I know that comes up pretty often, is we don't have, we're not placing over any easements or we try to stay away from existing, you know, trees, making sure that there's clear line there. And then, let me see, we have the next one. This is the, this is the requirement for power, which she will talk a little bit more on that, on the generator and what that looks like. But for the site itself, I don't know how to go back on this to show you guys. There we go. Like I said, we are going to take up some parking spaces, but it is in between the drive and we're trying to make sure that customers still use their prime parking because nobody wants to park in the back if we were to put this in the front. So if you have any questions on the site setup or why we chose this, let me know.
And as Bernice was talking about for the site setups, we work really closely with Walmart and picking those locations. Wing does not just go in and say, here's where we're going to set up the Nest. There's an assessment that's done to make sure that it's aligning with a few things. Part of our process is working with Walmart's digital team. So we work really closely with that team that does the curbside pickup orders. They also will support order fulfillment at your Walmart for any drone delivery orders as well. So as you may know, inside the Walmart, there's typically a staging area where that team is working to pull items from the store. They're bringing them, getting them into bags and then taking them out to the curbside pickup. So we ideally try for all of our locations. Again, we're in 12 locations, 12 cities around the metroplex. All of our nests are located next to or adjacent to the curbside pickup to support that infrastructure process. Again, keeping in mind that goal of 30 minutes or less, that location at your store is really critical to make sure that we're accomplishing that goal for your customers just like we are in our other 12 locations around the metroplex. Again, as you mentioned, Bernice mentioned, what you're seeing here in this photo with the, what we're, it kind of looks like QR codes. These are the pads that are used inside of the Nest to charge the drones during operating hours. So each of our drones are fully autonomous. When we get questions about our system, and as Mark mentioned earlier, our system is fully electric, fully autonomous. So our drones are not using any gasoline, all-electric. They're able to navigate and build out their flight plan and path to and from each customer's address using GPS coordinates when they put that address into the app. The pads allow us to make sure that drones are always charging during operating hours. Inside of the Nest, each drone has pins that are on the base of them that use those pads to allow them to charge. So when we get questions about battery life on the drones, that's never an issue for us because our drones are always able to charge during operating hours. Now, for all our DFW locations with our Walmart partnership, we operate only during daylight hours, which is 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. right now. In the summertime, when daylight saving time adjusts, we'll go back to 10 a.m. to 7 p.m. But we do not fly at night for any of our locations here in DFW or globally. In addition, for the site setup as well, as you'll see, there is a generator that we use for a site setup to power the pads. And then we also have a storage container that is located inside of the Nest that we use for overnight storage for, oops, sorry, for the drones. This gives you another rendering of what the pad setup looks like for both the pads and then inside of the Nest and just kind of shows you the layout that we use. Again, you'll have one drone per pad and those, again, are able to stay outside. We don't lock the pads up, but we will lock up the drones overnight. Keep doing the pointer. Okay, there we go. This just gives you another visual from the other side of the Nest of what, again, it looks like when the drones are inside of the Nest. The pads, again, are weather resistant. They can withstand cold, high winds, rains. You know, we had the crazy thunderstorms and tornadoes this past spring and summer. Pads were totally fine and able to withstand at all of our locations. And the drones also were able to stay contained inside of the containers with no issues. So diving a little bit more into our Wing operations. I know some of you were able to connect with me when you came out to the Lewisville site, but just want to make sure you all have a little bit of context on who Wing is as a company. We launched out of Google back in 2012 and then became our own subsidiary of Alphabet in 2018. So Google became our sister company and we became a standalone company focusing on last mile drone delivery on global scale. Since that time, we have grown as a company, which has been really exciting to see. We've done over 400 commercial, 400,000 commercial deliveries worldwide. In addition to our partnership with Walmart, we also have partnerships with DoorDash, which is our longest partnership in Australia. We also just launched in the UK, oh, sorry, a partnership with a company called Apean to do medical supply delivery as well as blood supply deliveries as well between hospitals in London. So we're throwing our applications on what commercial drone delivery can do and we're really excited about bringing some of those applications and lessons learned here to the U.S. in the coming years. So just planting that seed for something to think about for the Highland Village as you think down the road of how drone delivery can benefit the quality of life that you provide here for your residents. This just gives you a visual, a close-up of what our drones look like. Our drones themselves only weigh about 11 pounds. They carry a payload of about 2.5 pounds. The drones are fully wrapped in styrofoam and recycled plastic. They're very lightweight. They've been built with recycled parts to ensure a low-impact aircraft. The drones also have, as you see on them, 12 propellers on the top and then the four forward-facing propellers. Those top propellers are used for what we call vertical landing and takeoff. As you saw in the video, the drones are able to use those propellers to jump off of their pads, hover at that 20-foot mark in the air, lower the tether down to lock in the package. And then same when the drones arrive to the customer's homes. Our drones never land on the ground. They will hover at 20 feet in the air, lower the package down to customers and climb back to its cruising altitude of about 200 feet. Now, when you see two and a half pounds, a lot of people think, oh, that's not a lot, but you'd actually be surprised. So the hex tote that you see here can carry everything from a rotisserie chicken to cough medicine from the pharmacy. One of the biggest items that we get from all of our sites is for produce. So people ordering strawberries, blueberries, spinach, you name it, produce is one of our top items that we get. Now that we're heading into cold and flu season and especially in the spring, we saw a lot of orders from the pharmacy section for like allergy medicines, sinus medications, those type of things. So we have a wide range of items that we're able to deliver from the Walmart store, which is really cool. We've had people order cat food. So rather than getting in the car just to go get a few little tins of cat food for your pupet, you can have it delivered to your house. Other thing as well for speed on our drones, 65 miles an hour is the max speed. So again, thinking about that in travel time, rather than getting in traffic right now, which we know is rush hour, you're probably going maybe 30 miles an hour to go just a mile. The drone is able to go 65 miles an hour without any of those kind of traffic delays. So you're still, again, getting your items way faster than you would getting in your car. Our system is also built for safety, as Mark mentioned as well. So let's say, for example, one of the propellers goes down. Our system has redundancies built in. We don't need all the propellers on the drone to keep it in the air, but we have these safety redundancies built in to make sure that we're keeping our aircraft safe as well as the neighborhood safe where we operate. Similarly as well, for that tether that comes, that lowers the package down when it goes in for delivery, let's say, for example, Ms. Wilson leaves her cute little pug out in the backyard during delivery and he comes up and grabs the tether. It pulls on it more than three times, that tether detaches from the drone. So then the cute little pug, he keeps that tether, maybe just to go play with it, bury it in the backyard. But we make sure that the dog, the neighborhood, the customer is safe. Our drones stay safe as well. So we have a lot of those features that we've built in and we're really proud of that system that we have at Wing. In addition to that, we also have worked really closely with the FAA to make sure that all of our operations here in the U.S. are compliant with FAA policies and procedures. We went through a full environmental assessment called a NEPA assessment prior to launching any sites here in DFW to ensure that everything from our drones to our drone delivery network and system, including our pilots, are all meeting FAA regulations. As a Part 135 carrier, we're very similar to a UPS or a FedEx in how we're managed and overseen by the FAA. In addition to that, we also have a Flight Operations Center that's based in Capella, Texas, so not too far away from here. We have a full team of what we call pilots and command who are certified with Part 107 certification. They are able to oversee all of our DFW sites from our Flight Operations Center. The pilots are able to monitor the drones as they're navigating in the air. Our aircrafts are all equipped with ADS-B software. They have antennas on the back of each aircraft that allows them to communicate or squawk to other aircrafts in the area, whether it's a helicopter or another commercial operator. In addition to that, we always keep our drones under a threshold of 400 feet. So we know that most commercial airlines, airliners are operating well above 400 feet. We keep our cruising altitude at about 150 to 200 feet to make sure that we're maintaining airspace deconfliction. Another part of our process that our Flight Operations Team oversees is communication with police and fire departments. We know that a lot of municipalities have drone units, helipads and different things like that to help support the residents. And so as part of that, our Flight Operations Team is able to communicate, utilizing their flight systems with other operators, including municipal departments, to make sure, for example, if there is a no-fly zone that needs to be put up in a certain area, we will make sure that our drones are grounded and we're able to do that, those kind of updates and communications in real time. So all of this ties back to our goals on safety and making sure that we're keeping your community and your residents safe at all times. In addition to our safety regulations, we are really passionate about customer and consumer engagement. A lot of what my team does at Wing is making sure that prior to launching service, we're going down to communities and talking to residents. We want to make sure that people feel comfortable with the service and understand how drone delivery can benefit their quality of life. The video that you see behind me, the little gif, shows you the Sence Meyers. They are a couple that's in their now late 80s who lives in Christiansburg, Virginia. They started using our service when COVID first hit. And to date, they still use it to get their morning coffee. So they typically, our team in Christiansburg, Virginia knows that around 10 a.m. the order comes in from the Sence Meyers. They get two coffees and two bagels delivered to their house most days. And so this is just an example of how for your residents, whether you are a couple that's in your 80s and don't feel comfortable driving anymore or you're that young family that is having pasta night and you realize that you ran out of pasta sauce and don't want to go to the store. We've seen a wide range of how this service has been able to benefit communities. Also, as part of building community awareness and education, we do a lot to make sure that we're partnering with you, the City Council, Planning and Zoning and other city officials to connect with residents where they are. So again, as I mentioned, prior to launch, we'll do a lot on education. We always send out a mailer to customers that are in that six-mile delivery radius from a store to make sure that they are notified well in advance before they start seeing the drones in the air. That mailer goes into every mailbox for residential and commercial businesses, again, in that delivery zone radius. That includes details on our FAA regulation, privacy and safety features. In addition to that, we also do a lot of HOA events. We love to go out to community events. I just did a big STEM education event today with 200 students from Dallas ISD. Tomorrow, we'll be in Fort Worth for the Aviation Career Day for their students. And so that's a big part of what we like to do. And so that's a big part of what we like to do as well. We know that drone aviation holistically, it's an emerging industry. And so there's a lot of opportunities for workforce development growth here in North Texas when it comes to making sure that our students are equipped with the skills and knowledge that they need to go into this industry and help it to grow. So for Highland Village, we would love to connect with you all and talk about how we can get connected, whether it's an HOA, community meeting, going out to farmer's markets, going to festivals. We've got holiday festivals coming up for our team in December. All of those things are coming into play on how we make sure that we're building education, awareness and excitement about drone delivery. So with that, I will pause and see if there are any questions for myself, Mark or Bernice?
Can you go back to the map of our Walmart and the location of where the nest will be?
There.
Okay. Thank you. I'm trying to figure out.
It's in the front.
Towards LA Fitness.
So close to the road, the marketplace, the street, road comes in.
Yeah, the next lane to the right is the one that goes right in the grocery front door.
Is it possible like the locations like further to back towards the southeast?
Yeah, so I think this is the point, right? Yeah, so this is an outdated site plant. We currently have it and it's, I don't, I think it's on the third row back here. Yeah. So that's actually where it's at right now. This was one of the initial.
Okay.
Yep. So we wanted to make sure, we weren't too thrilled with it up here and there was other issues going on in the front, so we went ahead and moved it back here and it's working right now perfectly.
And just to address the question, as far as moving it further back, we noticed there's quite a bit of residential in that area. And then we've also got currently our OD pickup and delivery in that space and those parking spaces there are quite valuable. So the best solution for it is actually right in that space. I mean, I love the thought process. I, we definitely evaluated that piece there.
But you're also locating it closer to residential on the east side.
And so we, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't, I think we've met the threshold of like making sure that we have enough setbacks and distances from them. I don't remember if it's on the third or it's, I think it's, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's at their one. Yeah.
Obviously the drones don't think they do.
That area in front of the garden center is never really full.
Is that in the middle?
The drones, they're loud.
The drones are loud to an extent, but what you showed earlier was these will be, these will be generated by, they'll use a generator rather than hardwired electricity. It requires for it to be hardwired so that you don't have the generator noise next to your residents.
Yeah, absolutely. And you've got it completely correct. We were initially coming in with generators. We also aware of the fact that they do generate noise, but Catherine, could you talk about that noise level, kind of some references?
Yeah, so for the generator power, and I can go back to this slide, so for the decibels for the generator, it's at 63 dBA. And so from all 12 of our locations, all of the Walmarts are either near or surrounded by some type of residential property. The generator is not something that noise wise has been an issue. It stays often for most municipalities well below ordinance requirements for sound. So we haven't run into any issues with that and we have started conversations with Walmart on shore power and what that will look like for our sites coming, bringing that power from the store.
So in line with that, what type of feedback have you received from the residents that are close to the drone pad sites?
Yeah, so that's where the outreach starts early so that we can have conversations, bring the drones out and let people see it in person. After launching service as well, we'll do the days where we can invite people to come out to the store and see it in person. Most customers don't have any issues with the sound or the noise. For some, it's getting accustomed to, it's a new type of sound and understanding what is that when they hear it. But others will describe it as no different than your neighbor's lawnmower going by outside very briefly. And the difference is that your neighbor's lawnmower is going to be steadily emitting that sound out next door. Our drone comes in very quickly for that delivery and then climbs back to that 200 feet where the sound dissipates.
How many weekly trips do you guys have out of Louisville?
I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but we have customers that are ordering really regularly. I just met a very sweet woman who, an older woman in her 70s, she says she orders like three times a week, which I thought was pretty cool. So I know that our Louisville, Louisville's our second oldest site. We've been there now for over two years and we have a steady number of customers, regular customers that order from that store.
So two years and you're still operating off a generator. So is that kind of a timeframe we'd be looking at here for shore power when we come in?
I think no is the answer. No, so no. No, so we're actually upgrading a lot of these already to be permanent power. And Louisville is one of those.
Yes. Yeah, upgrading, I understand that, but it's been two years. So if this were approved, are we like two years at least before it kind of becomes a more permanent situation?
No, well, I think you have to put it in the context of when two years ago, that site and Frisco were our first sites ever in the DFW Metroplex to ever have drone delivery. So we've done a lot of growth and evolution for those sites and lessons learned in those two years. Since then, all of the 12 sites that we have now, we've launched 10?
12 sites that are active.
Yeah, we've got 12 that are active now, but those were our original first two sites. So the two year timeframe, that was kind of an anomaly from when we first launched operations to where now we're making that transition in 2025 to upgrade all of the sites.
Okay, that's locally, you've got this, we aren't the first people to have it, so other places, where are we looking?
Yeah, so we're in Australia. We're also in, as I mentioned, in London in the UK. So our site setups there are very different than what we have here in the US. It also is a difference in both federal, what we would call federal in Australia, as well as the local policies and ordinances there. So for example, in Australia, we have some of our nests that are on top of malls. And so the site setup there is done with shore power at malls. So also the requirements for federal regulations for drones is very different in Australia as well as in Europe and the UK than it is in the US. We're kind of playing catch up when it comes to the United States for drone technology and UAS, EVTOL technologies holistically. And so that again is where that two years ago, there was not FAA regulations and a lot of the policies that are in place now through the FAA were just being workshopped or white papered till we're now, we've got more standardization in the industry for what drone technology and drone operations look like. So we're, as the industry grows, sites and operations will also grow as well. Part of that as well is, as an example, we're launching a new drone next year. It'll be a bigger drone, it's our 8,000 model. So as the drone you saw now, 11 pounds, it only carries two and a half pounds. We've received feedback from residents that they want bigger packages, bigger deliveries. So like half gallon of milk detergent, fabric softener. So this larger drone will be able to carry five pounds and it'll have a larger box as well, so double this size to get more items out to customers more quickly. So hopefully that answers your question.
Great general presentation. Sorry, go back to the parking lot. You know, the 15 year old boy, I would love to see something like that in the parking lot as an adult. I don't know if I, I'm just thinking, is there something you're gonna do to, you know, shrubbery around it or something rather than just a chain link fence with the drones? And then going back to something you said about putting them on top of mall, have you guys ever thought about putting them on top of Walmart so we don't even see them? Has that been considered?
Absolutely. I mean, we've considered it, we've gone through that one several times over. So in order to put it on top of the building itself, it'd have to be structurally engineered to have that weight and also designed to have people up there. So it's definitely always in the thought process, but for here today, what we can do is we can set it up in the parking lot. To speak on the shrubbery, we know we have some options here and if that's a desire from this council and the panel here, that's something we can look at as far as doing some screening as well as looking at some of the aesthetics as far as some of the items that are in the structure itself. So we're definitely willing to do those pieces as well.
Of the 12 DFW sites, are they all operating on this current metal fence?
Yes.
Pretty much. We have one site that really wanted chain link fence for some reason, but I would say, I would personally prefer the wire welded. If you guys can approve that design, that's where I would like to go. It's, to me, it looks personally better.
Is it possible to do brick to where you wouldn't even see it?
I'm sorry.
Is it possible to do something like brick where you wouldn't see it?
No, so masonry, it restricts the operations for the drones. So the pads need an even type of airflow from outside to get, again, for that vertical landing and takeoff, brick masonry. And it's not just for us as an operator. Any other drone operator that you talk to, whether it's zip line, drone up, masonry restricts the technology for the drones.
And she could put that kind of cheap plastic foliage looking stuff like they've got.
They need the direct airflow going through.
Yeah, when we go right through it though, it's just that.
And then same thing as well, we get questions about putting, you know, taller trees and shrubbery. So the, again, the QR codes, the geofiducials that you see inside of the nest, we have to make sure to a certain extent that we're not casting shadows on those. The drone utilize those QR codes to identify how and where to land. And so when you're adding in masonry, tall shrubbery, cast shadows, and so that's where you run into safety issues at your location that you wouldn't have in other cities.
And if I could go back just to one quick question as far as how long we've been operational. So we've been operational, Wing has been operational in Frisco for two years because I think you're thinking of the site next to the stadium. As far as Frisco, we went operational September of 2023. Louisville, we went operational in December of 2023. So we're about to hit the one year mark in Louisville.
I'm sorry.
And we are coming back and I've got Bernice and her team, they are absolutely working on permanent power, shore power to make sure that we do follow through and make, make the whole project as a whole right.
Is that a Google versus Walmart thing?
What?
Meaning that, I mean, there's, there's power lines everywhere. There's light, there's, you know, parking lights and everything like that. You're running a 14K generator and there's ample power within so many feet of where that landing pad is. I just figured maybe Walmart doesn't want to let you connect into their power lines or something like that.
It's 100% timeline and process. In order for us to roll the sites out, because we have a very, very great goal here with DFW, we looked at how do we get operational as quickly as possible and learn as much as we can as quickly as possible. So we chose to go the generator route initially and like I said, we were coming back and we'll give them all shore power.
What necessitates the field size? Is it use, is it demand or is it?
Yep, great question. So it is 100% demand as far as the size of the number of pads, number of drones that are actually onsite. And right now, we've got a total of 18 pads for the majority of our sites as far as what we're planning.
So no, no specific research to this general area on current demand for it?
Oh, no, we have quite a bit of research as far as what the demand is. We look at the store operations, what we're seeing from online orders. We look at the types of orders that are being placed and we say projected based off of growth, based off of what we see today, this is what we need in order for the site to be successful.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the current usage that you get out of Louisville? Timeframes, delivery numbers, those kinds of?
Larry, would, would you be able to help me out as far as what we're seeing demand from that site there?
So I can tell you the demand in comparison to Highland Village, if it's pre-heat, Highland that comes to digital orders. So our basket size speaks for itself too as well. Just our basket size compared to our market, our market consists of 10 malls. Our basket size alone, it's, it averages 100, 105, something like a 150 dollars a basket versus all these other stores from our market at, I'm gonna say $30 again, these high volume stores is about $65, $45, $35 basket size. We're definitely the highest volume store in the market. High, outside the market is Henry Creek, the Colony, some of the dent stores. Definitely we generate just year over year, the last three years, we've done like 50% to 70% double digit comp in digital orders. This year alone, we're at 133K, you know, just orders for.
Specifically for drone delivery?
Drone delivery, we don't have, I don't have that number itself, but that's kind of like the numbers they are using to make sure, talking about the drone system coming into work. I don't have the Louisville numbers. I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't know the exact numbers. I don't wanna give out, I don't know any information about it.
So can we get two things? Can we get the Louisville weekly numbers and can we also get number of accidents by type in DFW over the past year?
Zero accidents.
Zero period?
Zero.
That's good.
And I can follow up with the numbers.
For the sold delivery?
Yep, absolutely.
So following up on that, crash rates are zero and injuries are zero?
Zero.
Okay.
Privacy and data collection.
Good question.
Some people might like to taminate the backyard or.
Yeah.
How do you like that? What do you do with it? Who do you share it with? What can you collect?
So the drones do not have any live video, video feed, nor do they have audio. So going back to this image, cause you can kind of see it for the flight operations. Oh, no, went the wrong way. So the drones, as well as our pilots, again, no live audio feed. There we go.
So what are they looking at there? They just?
That is the nest. So in that center screen on the top TVs, that is an actual nest. So our team is able to see every single nest to monitor the drones in real time. They're also, that's top screen, right hand side, that is a map of DFW. So they're visually similar to an air traffic controller. They're monitoring how the drones are moving through the airspace at all times, but they're also able to see other aircrafts. So they can see 747s, they can see helicopters. That is what they're able to see. And so they're monitoring the maps. You're seeing a geo version of the map that they're able to monitor. So that is what our team is able to do. And then they're communicating with each other. Each pilot is assigned a certain number of drones that they monitor at all times during operational hours. So we have hundreds of drones for, across all of our sites and they're able, each pilot is making sure that those drones are operating functional, functional properly at all times.
You said there's no audio. Is there video?
No video.
They're not active on, there is no?
So yes, so there's no live video feed, there's no audio. So for, we've gotten that question for a lot of our cities. What if I'm literally ahead of a gentleman, said that he likes to bathe in the nude in his backyard? That's great. We can't see you at all and our pilots can't either. Now, the drones are coming into deliver, they do have low resolution optical lenses that are on the base of the drone. They're black and white drones, similar to my 1997 Nokia little phone that I had. They're using that for spatial awareness. So again, as I mentioned, power lines or trampolines, cars, the drones can make out objects using that and it's a black and white kind of, I forgot the technical term for it, but.
Lidar, it's lidar.
Thank you, yes, lidar. So they're using the lidar radar on the drones to identify objects and the obstructions. Ideally, the drones are going to be looking for about a 20 foot space that is clear in that delivery spot that you selected to be able to lower the package down. Now, if there is an obstruction, for example, our drones don't fly over water, they can identify what may be a body of water, but if they see that, then they wouldn't be able to deliver. So we've had people put their delivery zone next to their pool and then the drone realizes, okay, that's a body of water. And so it'll course correct and try to deliver a few feet away from that body of water.
So then addresses and maybe orders, that's all the data you collect?
Yeah, so nothing, no, nothing data wise goes back to our pilots. They are not able to see any, any feeds or any, collect any data. They're only focused on the radar and making sure that the drones are moving through the space as well. Now, from a data standpoint for the drones, because the drones are using the coordinates to get to and from customer addresses, any of that type of data goes back to a data center, but it's something that our team and most of the company would never see.
Good question. You go.
Is there, does Walmart limit the number of deliveries a person can have over a period of time? If I order, it can carry two and a half pounds. If I order 10 pounds, does that mean I'm gonna have four deliveries and are they gonna come, you know, back to back? Like is my neighbor gonna have drone deliveries coming, you know, in a matter of a certain amount of time or how is that?
It'll, yeah, it'll stagger. So we have had people who've ordered things that are multiple things and so sometimes it is maybe five pound. I don't think we've ever had anyone order something that's 10 pounds, that's typically.
Well, just total.
Yeah, so we've, we've had people that have done orders, one, an order, but it requires two drones. And so in that instance, we'll send them out, but it's staggered. So you'll get a countdown clock for both drones, letting you know when they're going to be heading out. to be heading out and they don't arrive at the same time. Because our system is also autonomous, the drones are not using the same path. So coming into your home, you may have the drone coming, one drone coming from the north, another may come from the southeast. They are always using randomized paths. And again, that's part of the autonomous software system on the backend to ensure that we're not having drones coming in from the same route to disturb residents, your neighbors or other residents as best as possible.
Alien invasion.
And again, so that's where that mailer that comes in is really important, where people get that in advance. And so, because we've had people where they're like, oh, I got the mailer, my neighbor has started using this, and so I know what it is, I've seen it before, those type of things.
Yeah.
And just want to say today, right now, we're doing a two-order, like, limit for the time being, as we're getting the technology and we will continually improve it.
So I have the Walmart Plus app and I pay a fee, monthly fee for those deliveries. Is this, you may have said it, but I missed it, is the delivery separate? Is it going to be included in that membership that people may or may not already have?
So, I'll go ahead and address this one. So today, when we launch, right now, we've been doing free delivery regardless of Walmart Plus or just an everyday customer. As we integrate today, for integrated sites, that price today is $19.99 per delivery. And if you have Walmart Plus, we have it down to $12.99. We are, we have that price set to be competitive with the market, and it is based off of the service offerings that we currently have. And we are also taking market feedback as well, and we are evaluating that price point. So we are, we, again, today, when we launch, free, $19.99, $12.99, and we'll, I don't want to overcommit here, but we are evaluating today.
I have a few questions.
Got a question on safety.
Oh, good.
How many, how many incidents have you had and what kind?
Zero.
What about birds? I thought you said something about environmental, birds maybe?
Yeah.
Count birds?
Nope. So here at DFW Metroplex, we've had no incidents. Our drones are equipped to, again, navigate the airspace, but most wildlife, your wildlife recognizes that that's not a bird. They realize it's an aircraft, and so we haven't had any incidents. Same thing as well for residential, commercial properties. No incidents with any drones, like, I know people have nightmares about, oh, what if the drone crashes on my head or hits my car or anything like that. We haven't had any of those incidents.
Follow-up though on that, do you carry umbrella liability? What kind?
So it's kind of a twofold, I think, process, depending on where, if, if an incident was to happen and where it happens, that would determine who would, I guess, be liable.
I can take that.
Yeah, okay.
So if there was an incident, you would contact Walmart. Walmart would basically take a look at the situation and then bring the responsible parties in line and we would resolve it. But for the customer, contact Walmart. And we have a process that we go through.
You know, it's a rarity?
Extremely rarity, zero.
Bring something like this into our city and then think of what happens. There's got to be someone who's accountable at that point in time.
Yeah, absolutely. So contact Walmart and we will begin working that process. We won't send our customers to, hey, call somebody, call somebody. Walmart will take that customer and be that engagement.
Can we talk about the six-mile radius and have you, do you have a map of that? Let that include, because I'm thinking at Walmart's six-mile radius. I, I know I get, I can get Louisville, because I did it, just to try it out. But I would want Highland Village to be my home store because of the revenue that it would generate. But what else is around in that six-mile radius that you're talking about?
So we would determine that once we, typically, we will assess that six-mile radius once we've confirmed that the city is eligible and of course approved for site setup. And when you're thinking about the six-mile radius, it's not going to be always like a perfect circle. So there's a number of different factors. For example, if there is a lake, like Lake Louisville. Same thing for nature preserves, wildlife parks, we do not fly over those. So it's not always, again, a perfect circle. It could be certain areas or pockets that are not eligible. Similarly, we don't fly in or through Class B or Class C airspace. So that as well can also impact how that radius looks. So it's on a municipal basis that we build that out for each city. And we ensure that, if approved, we can share that map with you also, you have that in advance.
But have you started looking at that? Because if approved, we're going to want to know where.
Yes, so we have started looking at that, but I don't have like a map today. Like, again, the team would go in and do more of a deep dive, looking at residential properties, commercial businesses, and factoring all of those different layers. So it's, it's a multi-pronged process that our flight operations team goes through to build out and confirm what that delivery radius would be.
Do you fly over city parks?
Yes.
You will fly into the park?
If there is an interest to set up a delivery zone at a park, we have done that in the past, but mostly that's more for like event purposes and things like that. But typically, we would not have a delivery zone in a park.
Because we have two parks on the lake, so the concern for me would be you've got.
We would not fly. So if they're adjacent to the lake, there's, it's a restriction or barrier, like there's a certain amount of miles that we wouldn't get too close to the lake. But again, unless residents, and then they would have to actually reach out to Wing to request to have that delivery zone turned on because it's not a residential property. So, and typically, we've only done that in partnership with the municipal team like Parks and Recreation and getting it approved through the city. So we don't set up delivery zones or do deliveries to parks. Same for schools, churches. We don't do any deliveries to those type of properties within municipalities unless it is approved or requested by the city.
And what restrictions do the drones have for flight?
What do you mean by that?
Altitude, separation.
Altitude, wind, rain.
Yeah, so for altitude, again, we stay below a 400-foot threshold. Our drones do not go above that. We typically are flying at about 150 to 200 feet. We are able to fly in rain, sustained winds, anything, I think, above 30, I believe, sustained knots is where we're like getting a little risky. For snow or ice, we are able to handle winter conditions and weather conditions. The pads that you all saw inside the nest, those have been able to withstand all of the crazy Texas weather. Now, when we get into heavy things like thunderstorms, lightning, tornadoes, of course, any high gusts, high winds, we will ground operations in pause. We notify customers through the app when that does happen, so they're able to be aware that they cannot place orders. So there's a notification that goes out.
Temperature variations that you can't fly?
So for, for anything, I think, below freezing, once we cross that threshold, they're assessing flight operations specifically for the drones. And then same for heat, anything over 100 Fahrenheit, again, they're going to assess and determine what makes them sense. But it's a real-time decision that our flight operations team is looking at. And similar to, you know, DFW, LeField, and communication with the Weather Service and also in other airports to align. So if, you know, DFW is grounding or LeField is grounding because of weather, then similarly, we're doing the same.
John, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I have two questions, I think. So during the presentation, I believe you mentioned, or someone had mentioned, that the ideal location is next to or in, in line with the curbside pickup or whatever Walmart calls it. To me, that would be the northeast corner, as we looked at it on the map. There's a cul-de-sac-ish area at the northeast corner behind the store that just kind of stores trash right now. I think that would be a perfect size. It's also close to the curb and go, or curbside pickup. So what has eliminated that area from being considered? And then my second question is, the location as it's presented, not now, but where it was moved to seems to be as far away from the store as possible. So how is that efficient for what you're trying to achieve here?
You want to talk about the?
I'll talk about.
Sorry. If you can also touch on, I thought I heard setbacks mentioned. So what was the design criteria that you were at least trying to achieve that may have avoided some of those spots?
So I'll do the truck turnaround. So the circle in the back, that's for the trucks. So the loading dock back there, the trucks need to be able to come in, do a turnaround, a 180 and be able to come out. So that's a lot of, we get a lot of cities who ask us about that truck turn and.
It's a good point.
Yeah. No, no, you're good. A lot of people.
Just do a different loop around.
You would think, but, and our drivers are great, but we want to make it easy on them, you know?
That's right.
And then the site setup, so setbacks, we do a couple things. We look at the city ordinance and then we also look to make sure that they're not, there's a, and Wing will have to speak on that, there's a threshold that they want to be away from these residential homes. We want to make sure that they're away from there. But we look at, usually setbacks are building, but we want to make sure we keep those in mind, landscape, things of those n- the nature. It is the farthest point, I can understand that, but we also wanted to make sure, we always try to put it by the grocery pickup, but sometimes because parking or between trees or the islands, we usually have some islands that don't allow for the nest setup to fit in there, we're trying to do it where it doesn't cause as much disruption as well.
John?
So I think I've got three questions. So you mentioned that each of the drones are equipped with ADS-B. Do they ever fly without ADS-B?
Never, no.
Okay. And if there's an issue with the ADS-B, I guess they.
They're pulled off the flight line.
Okay. Next question is, is there a max number of drones per store? So could you have like multiple nests? And is there a maximum number of drones that you would have at a single store?
So there's not necessarily a maximum of drones. So the uniqueness of our system and the reason why, for example, most drone operators are not fans of the masonry, in addition to the technology, we want this to be scalable. So let's say for the city of Highland Village, just as you heard, like the city of Louisville has been a very high, a very busy store for us. And so as we continue to grow with the city of Louisville, we're in conversations with the city right now and looking at what drone delivery will look like for the next few years for them, we want to be able to grow the nest. So if in time Highland Village says, hey, we want to add in, increase it from 18 pads to 25 pads, we're able to do that really quickly with the flexibility of the site setup. For Wing, we also talk about what we call our drone delivery network, where in time, we love to be able to build out operations similar to what I mentioned for what we're doing in London with medical supply delivery. The number one question I always get from residents is prescription medication. When can you deliver prescription medication? We don't do that now, but we know that there is a need for it in the US. Similarly, when we're thinking about hospitals and being able to offer medical supply delivery by drone, we're thinking about all of those things. And so as a company for Wing, our drone delivery network is what we would love to envision and bring to the US, where we're able to set up in municipalities drone nests that can support different businesses at one time. So you may have the Walmart and then maybe there's another nest on the other side of town closer to a hospital, where the drones can be interchangeable and help to supply different businesses at, at one time. So there's not, what we would say, a maximum. Our goal is to grow that number so that eventually we're able to build out the infrastructure to support multiple partners and vendors at one time.
And what was the dimension of the drone itself?
So in terms of like the width and length, so I always say it's a little bit shorter than me, 5'5". I don't have like the exact numbers, but in holding it, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's not too small, not too big. Yes, and I can go back. It doesn't have the width on that.
So my question is, when, so people want to deliver more. So you've got something that's.
There we go.
It doesn't have the.
So if you've got some information, you'd have.
Hang on real quick, hang on, hang on one second. So if you need, all right, so right now I got 2.3 pounds or something, that's probably, what, three feet by three feet?
Yeah, I would say maybe a little bit longer, maybe like four by three, maybe a little bit longer than that.
So if I'm going to carry five pounds, is that going to require a bigger drone?
Yes, so that's our, our 8000 model drone is going to be probably maybe like two-thirds the wingspan and then also longer in terms of the front of the drone. So it will be a bigger drone, slightly heavier as well, but it will look exactly the same. So, and I'm happy to send after this some video footage of what that looks like. We have that up on our YouTube page that shows that. We just rolled it out back in July at the Oshkosh Conference. And so similarly for the package, so this is called our hexo, as you can see by the shape, the package for the 8000 is going to be a little bit wider and also taller to accommodate that five pounds.
How, how big do you plan on these getting and how much weight do you plan on these carrying? So right now, I mean, like, so you're, you've got a bigger one and eventually you'll have an even bigger one, right? Because people will want, you know, a 15-pound turkey for Thanksgiving. What are the plans with regards to size? Have you guys thought about that?
No, so for the 8000, we have a confirmation that we would be using that with Walmart. That's just a wing rollout that we have done in terms of our holistic partnerships with different companies. So it's not necessarily that we would have that 8000 model here in Highland Village at any point in time. That would probably be something that we would need to walk through with Walmart and see what makes the most sense in terms of operations. So that's just something that's Wing-specific. And again, that's based on feedback that we have received through our partners around the globe, from their customers asking for heavier, bigger, more.
And then final question, it was related to what you had brought up. So we've got a six-mile radius, which is going to include Flower Mound, it might even include Louisville, Copper Canyon, Double Oak. Do they have any involvement in this? I know that the Walmart is Highland Village, but the airspace is going to cover multiple municipalities.
Can you talk about FAA regulations?
Yeah, so for that part of the process, it is federally regulated. So the municipalities don't control or can put any regulations for the airspace, but we do work really closely with each municipality and surrounding areas to make sure that they are included on the conversation prior to launching service. So like most recently, we just launched in the city of Cedar Hill. And so surrounding there, we've got, you know, DeSoto, Dunkinville, parts of Mansfield. And so a lot of what my team does is that we're reaching out to those municipalities, going and sitting down with the city manager, mayor, city council, to walk them through the technology, answer questions, make sure that everyone feels comfortable about those questions on safety, privacy and regulation, to ensure that, again, it's a smooth process as best as possible when we launch. We also make sure that they are clear that when it comes to the point of sale, it is at the store of origin from where the drones are flying.
What is your timeline? Let's say this gets approved, what would be your proposed timeline or ideal?
Yeah, so it depends on the permitting process, how long it takes for us to get any required permits back for the site prior to us launching construction at the store. Then from there, in a best-case scenario, we can, you know, work on a 14-business-day timeline for typically construction. After construction, we do flight testing. Our team gets the drones out. We're doing flight simulations, running through that. That takes another, you know, two to three business days. So in total, you're, you're looking at, you know, all things considered, maybe a three-week process from when you're actually launching service.
And just one other factor that's kind of factored into this as well, is we also look at our store operations to make sure that we are doing something that's going to align with not impacting our sales season. I mean, we're getting right into our heaviest peak. So we've got to make sure we coordinate quite a few pieces. But yeah, typically, our longest portion, portion of the project itself is just working through our sales process here.
So as you're meeting with us, alluding to his question, I mean, six miles and we're talking about, it's the crow flies, I mean, that's probably even Lantana, I mean, it's reaching a lot of different towns. You're right now meeting with all of them, letting us know this may be happening?
Yes, so we wouldn't reach out until a city has confirmed and said, yes, like we've gone through the proper processes maybe with, every city has been different. So some cities require planning and zoning commission and city council approval, some have just said go straight to permit. So every city has been very different on what the process looks like. But once we have confirmed that process with the city and made sure that we are in alignment with the city's requirements, then that is when we start that outreach process. So we would not start that beforehand, because we don't want to be the boy who cried wolf, right? And wanting to also make sure that we are working hand in hand with each municipality.
You're delivering in Highland Village now?
Correct.
City council approval.
They don't need it.
They don't need it.
You don't need it. The point of purchase.
That's Louisville, you're applying to Highland Village to your, your point, you know, all these other communities.
Right, so the, the council approval is not required for the drones? That's the airspace?
That's what we got back to just a question.
Oh, got you, okay.
Pizza Hut have to get permission in each city council.
Right, but prior to launching in Louisville, our team did reach out to Highland Village to make sure that we were, yeah, communicating.
The family's applied from a base.
Yes.
Already in our city.
Yes.
I asked that question after the last visit. Still don't know how many are delivering already in Highland Village.
One, Charlotte.
That's me. And I did it when it was free.
Ice cream, little bell.
Okay, so sure, I want a bag of M&amp;M's, I have to pay a $20 delivery fee. My bag of M&amp;M's is $35.
Can you speak to the cost and any programs you might have available for individuals that are on limited or low income or for mobility-challenged individuals that are on fixed incomes?
So right now, we do not offer a discount. Walmart's universally always offering the lowest price possible and we are always, when it comes to scale, able to bring prices down. We're notorious for being able to do that. And so as we continue to grow with this program, as we get more market feedback, we should be able to apply Walmart principles to the.
To the delivery.
Correct, correct. And I mean, we'd love Highland Village to help us move towards that as well.
I have another quick clarifying question. I think I heard you, you said there is pharmacy delivery, but then later you said, is it only over the counter?
Only over the counter.
So no prescriptions, no controlled substances?
Correct. And there's a, there's a process that we would need to go through as far as the Texas Board Pharmacy in order to make sure that we are compliant with not just FAA, but also local and state policies.
And you have.
Per store, you don't get a blanket for all the stores?
For board of pharmacy? Uh, no.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's statewide, so just.
So once you get it once, you're going to have it everywhere?
In the state of Texas, yes.
Well, but you have to meet each store, you have to have consultation requirements with the pharmacy. There's a lot of little things that each store.
It's a federal process as well that goes through PHMSA, so there's, it's a multi-layered process. It wouldn't just be board approves and then we're delivering prescription medications. So, but it is something that we know that has been requested. Walmart has gotten that question, we get that question often, and so we're definitely doing that research on the backend to determine how best to do that. Similarly as well, from the drone technology side, understanding that we can't just jump right into prescription deliveries. Again, depending on the type of prescription and medication, drones are not able to identify if you are indeed the prescription holder. And so understanding how best to do that is something that our team is researching as well.
You can, you can get Walgreens to deliver your controlled meds because they give you that option.
By human, by human though, right?
Yeah.
By human, because you have to get a signature, you have to have a.
I've never, I've never had to sign for them.
I like the way you're thinking.
They've left them on front door sometimes.
Did we get Larry's, he's got some information and I'd like to know, because, did you get the information?
It is a little information, but we also look at the other stores like the Priscilla store. So Louisville, off Main Street, when we started the promotion, the orders was much drastically higher than they were three delivery.
Of course.
It went from 30 to 40 daily to like 3 to 5 average day when it comes to daily orders. So you can time that through the week, like seven days. Average basket is $10 due to the weight size, right? Top items is produce. It was cilantro was the one, the top item. It was like last minute items that somebody forgot to make their food or dinner, right? Snacks, snacks, caddies, pretty much. And then pharmacy, over the counter items. Company-wide with the drone is Oreos is on the road or one item.
That's awesome. He told me it was Red Bull.
Yeah. Thank you.
It changes and the use cases change with them as well.
Sorry, quick comment and two final questions. Comment, it's helpful if we could see a video of, with volume, because I'm wondering about the noise. I've got a couple little drones and they're pretty noisy. I mean, it's hard to even see a picture, but if we could see, not live necessarily here in the, in the building, but even outside maybe. I think there'll be another presentation before we wrap this thing up. Sure there will be.
However, we're willing to work with the city, so.
I'd just like to see and hear it, you know, to see how distracting the noise might.
Well, we can definitely get you out to the, either the Louisville nest or one of the surrounding cities to go see it in person. That's going to give you the most realistic depiction of what it looks like and what it would look like at the store versus doing a demo like in a parking lot. It's not the same type of setup, yeah.
You said zero incidents, I'm sorry, just to follow up on that. Do you have data on the amount of complaints about the noise from them?
Um, no, I don't have data, but it's very minuscule. Like I think, again, we've been in 12 cities and I work on all of our site launches and the municipal outreach for every single city that we've been to. And so this year I maybe can count on one hand the number of noise complaints that we've received, which I think speaks volume to, again, 12 different cities around the Metroplex and only a handful. And I think for those noise complaints, it's typically been either what is that or we got a complaint once where there's, there's a drone hovering over my neighbor's house. They were concerned that it was a spy plane and they had called the police department because they thought we were a Chinese drone and we weren't. Or you have those residents who, again, the nude bather guy that was in the backyard and wanting to make sure. So we get those type of things, but also as well, we've had HOAs who've reached out and said, could you come out, bring the drone? We would love for you to just talk to our residents, answer any questions, even though we've, we've got the mailer, we just want to make sure and kind of hear from you about the privacy piece. And so we do go out and talk to HOAs and that's what my team does, we'll do that in person. And it's been really impactful, I think, in terms of helping to keep that number of complaints or issues pretty low.
And to be honest, I was just on the phone, just, I think it was yesterday, with Mayor Louisville, and he basically said, I'm surprised. He says he lives very close and he says this thing's been very impressive. He's like, I have had nil to zero complaints from his constituents, ah, constituents, sorry. But very good feedback that we've been getting for the most part.
Well, you mentioned limits that you guys go on, I'm flying, is there a high wind? What limits do, is any part of the federal government, the FAA puts on the drone usage? Are there any limits that you're under right now currently that we might not be aware of? If we could structure a program we should be aware of that you have to follow?
No, so the, the main thing is that remembering that we are commercial delivery. So we've gotten questions about military applications or us working, like can you work with our police department or those type of things? Our drones are specifically for small package delivery only. So anything other than that, that is what we've been approved for as a company by the FAA to do is small package delivery. So anything for like surveillance, those type of things, our drones are not designed for that. They don't have the ability to do that. So I think that's the main thing to keep in mind is that we were approved by the FAA for small package delivery only and that is only, the only thing that we focus on and do. And our system and our drones are designed to do only that and nothing else.
The last thing you mentioned there about Thomas, I'm assuming there's a kill switch somewhere you can shut them down. You know, I'm the old guy that thinks technology is going to kill you someday, but between windows and the pool skimmer, right? So I imagine there's a kill switch somewhere where things go crazy, you just shut it down, right?
So the drones are always in communication with our pilots at the Flight Operations Center in Capel. There's not necessarily a kill switch, but let's say if, for example, the drone has a malfunction or needs to, what we call, we call it triage, but basically needs to be maintenance or serviced, the drone is able to communicate back to its pilot to let it know, hey, service issue, it sends a code. And then the drone is able to return to the nest and then be pulled off the flight line for it to go basically off to the doctor. So not necessarily like a doomsday button or anything like that, but there's.
Based on human interaction though or based on drone itself realizing a malfunctioning, malfunction you?
Yeah, so the drones do what we call Fitbit tests every day. So if you were to go to any of our sites, like randomly in the middle of the day, you may see one or two drones that will hop off of their pad and they're kind of hovering in the air. You'll see the propellers are moving at different times. So they do simulate flight simulations and systems checks every day during business hours to make sure that all of their systems are go. So no different than when you get on your American Airlines flight and your pilot is doing systems checks before taking off. Our drones are doing the same thing every single day during operating hours. So that's how they're able to make sure and assess if something is wrong, they're able to communicate that back. For all of our Walmart locations as well, we have a ground operations team, so we do have staff that's on-site at the store who are, who are trained by Wing to help triage. So if a drone is having a malfunction or a systems issue, the pilot in command can communicate to our ground ops team and they can come in and pull those out of the nest.
So I think Brent has a question and then we're gonna, we have to end it because we have a ZVA meeting right after this, so.
Is the system set up to handle multifamily slash apartments and how does that work?
So at this time, unfortunately, no, we are not delivering to multifamily properties, but we know that is a need and we're hoping that we'll be able to expand that in 2025. Again, I, as someone who lives in a townhome, would love to be able to get drone delivery. So we're working on that and we know that that is a need, not just for Highland Village, but for a lot of cities around the Metroplex.
One, real quick, when you said Part 135 and Part 107, correct?
Yes, so we are a Part 135 aircraft certified carrier and then all of our pilots are Part 107 certified.
Well, we really appreciate you guys coming out and the presentation and all the information. It's a little overwhelming, but it's great information. I'm looking toward Kevin, there's no vote, there's no nothing, there's no, no nothing. This was all just in presentation, no consensus or anything needed. Okay, perfect. So I just want to finish up with, I think this, I really do appreciate you guys coming out. I am concerned about the generator. I'm thinking about those restaurants that are right there on the parking lot, just right across the road, that, do any of them have patios and stuff? So if you can get, if we can figure out how to make, not operate off of generators, then, you know, I like that a whole lot better. And figure out how it's affordable to deliver because my M&amp;Ms went to $35 with your delivery fee. And I think if that's it, no other comments, no other?
Fairly good. Just wanted to state briefly again, of course, this does come down to the zone issue. The flight patterns and faces targets started delivering and six-mile radius came into Highland Village, they could do that. This is really site-specific for the area that they want to do in the parking lot. So that's how we would need to modify our zone order so it would allow such a thing. So I would assume we would probably do, look at the cabinet, automatic sky, probably some type of a site plan approval process if we were to do that.
Well, and part of it also gets to, I mean, there's a number of cities around the Metroplex that have done extensive regulations such as Plano, the others that have done very little, such as Segoville, because I was at that meeting the other night, a couple few weeks ago. And so it kind of depends from city to city on what the nature of the regulations are going to need to be, because I think we can anticipate Walmart, Walmart may be kind of cutting-edge locally or DFW on this. Walmart's not going to be the last one to do this. And so we might as well just be prepared, I mean, presently we probably don't have any other retailers in Highland Village that would be basing anybody, at least that we know of right now. But as this, as the technology gets better and smaller drones can pick up larger packages, it's gonna, it's gonna take, take off and pun somewhat intended with respect to other retailers, you know, more, you know, other large box as well as a mid-sized box retailer. So it's probably best to go ahead and do, I would suspect, I'm not necessarily overregulating, but certainly not leave it wide open with no regulations either. And site planning also obviously will be part of that process.
And I do just have one question. Is that something that we would be able to parallel potentially with our application?
Well, I mean, the problem is we've got a kind of a new and unlisted use right now. And so there's really no application that we could be doing. We can do that, but, you know, kind of part of the deal is, here's, you know, we have a two-leading process for ordinances in Highland Village. And so the answer is, could we parallel it? Yes, but of course you do that, as in, I'm sure you've probably already experienced this in other cities where they're going through the same process of the new and unlisted use, adding regulations at the same time doing, so obviously you, you do so, you're kind of at your own risk.
Yeah, no, completely understand. And so when we look at this here, initially our approach is to come in, set up, learn, and then also to come back to the city and say, we need to make sure this is a polished product with shore power. So that's kind of the question, maybe consideration. We don't have to have an answer today.
And we've done with other cities, so some cities, I think Louisville is a great example where we did, we started with Louisville as a pilot program. We did that for one year. I think it was as an accessory use is what we started for the permitting process. Other cities, we've done this as a special use, so looking at it from that end of the spectrum for permitting. And then cities from there have been able to say, well, after that one year, whether it's an SUP or for accessory, that at the end of that one year, we'll come back.
I know, I know in Milothea, I think that was one thing we were talking about.
Yeah, and then the city of Cedar Hill, as I mentioned, we just launched with them this week or last week. It's a special use permit with that one-year requirement, also for.
Lancaster.
City of Lancaster. And then for the city of Wiley, similarly, we did that one for an SUP with the requirement that the one year we would come back to the city with updates on the plan, site plan for shore power.
Yep.
And we can talk about all that as.
Yeah, that's true.
Definitely appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you.
Plan and zoning, thank y'all so much for joining us tonight. And with that, city council is adjourned at 6:54. I'm not gonna, I don't.
P and Z adjourned at 6:54.
Perfect, thank y'all.